I'd like to call the March 5th, the Board of Education in Buncombe County to order. And I don't have my agenda in front of me. Thank you very much. I would like to amend the agenda to add a resolution that we will put in the action agenda. Thank you. And with that change, could I have approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The agenda is amended. Ms. Dr. Baldwin.
I want to start out by, normally we have our ROTC, one of the ROTC cadet groups from our schools, bring the flag for the pledge. And I want to recognize the military ball that took place this past Saturday. And Ms. McMahon, Ms. Franklin were in attendance. I'm not sure if anyone else from the board was there. But this is the fourth annual military ball, and it brings all of the cadet groups in from across the county. That also included Asheville High School. Just a wonderful event. Lieutenant Colonel Bergeron, who I had the privilege of working with when I was principal at Reynolds High School, received a regional award from the Veterans Association. He's been 19 years. He is our veteran ROTC instructor, so I want to commend him as well. Middle school, intermediate school, and elementary schools had an all-county chorus performance. It happened to be at the same time as the commissioners' meeting, so Mrs. Swanger represented our central office. And I understand that they had a standing-room-only crowd. So that was at the First Baptist Church downtown, which is a very large facility. So very successful. So I really do believe that this will become an annual district event for many years to come. So, Ms. Swanger, anything you want to add about that particular performance? Enough said. Students outstanding. The Buncombe County Commissioners on that same night approved $6.5 million to uphold a prior commitment for a new swimming pool to support our school-based swimming programs. While the actual location has not yet been determined, the planning stages will soon begin. And our own swim coaches, and I recognize, I think, probably Coach Colom's here, I don't know if Coach Vess is from Reynolds, both of those coaches, want to thank them. They've certainly been instrumental in making sure that that process took place. And it will continue on, and they will certainly be important resources as that planning goes on. In addition, Dr. Green and the Commissioners reiterated a verbal commitment agreement between the Commission and our school board to maintain the operation of the Zurgner Pool to accommodate the practice needs of our Robertson and Reynolds teams, and serve as a host site for multiple competitive swim meets. And at the commissioners' meeting, I had an opportunity to really focus in and emphasize that. I think that's extremely important, because the Zurgner Pool is not just about Robertson and Reynolds, swimming teams and swim programs. Because that particular site is one, is used, in fact, it may be the most frequent host of sites for swim meets for across the county, and extends beyond Buncombe County. I would say western North Carolina. So I applaud the decisions and the directions that the Commissioners and Dr. Green have gone with that. In essence, we are going to be looking for a written contract over the next few weeks, and that contract will state that the county will provide the funding to operate and maintain the pool for our student athletes. And we will work to identify the staffing requirements for practice and match operations. In addition, we have agreed that pool facility experts will be brought in to examine the pool facility, and to determine what, if any, repairs need to be made to support the season's demand. I anticipate bringing both the contract and a summary of that inspection process to you, the board, in the very near future. I want to talk a little bit about the graduation initiative. Earlier this morning, the State Board of Education released a consolidated data report that provides annual statistics on high school dropouts. These results are based on data from the past 2013-2014 school year. And I'm very pleased to report that our student dropout count of 225, that's 225 too many, but that represents the eighth year in a row that we've had a reduction. Since the inception of the graduation initiative, and that was in 2006, the number of students who have dropped out of school has decreased in Buncombe County by 49% through the 2013-14 school year. I think that's absolutely amazing. I would also note that this past August, we graduated 36 students following our summer mini-mester. And that is the most in this program's history. We have in attendance, let's see if I can find him, he may be running a little late, Mr. Murdock here? Yes, Mr. Bill Murdock here, Executive Director of the Evelyn Foundation, and one of the original thinkers of the graduation initiative concept. Ms. Kay Lamb, Director of the Graduation Initiative, who does such an outstanding job with leadership. And then my favorite search-and-recover team, there's none better in the country than our team of specialists, and that is Sharon Fish, and Jill Castello, and Emily Walters. And we're just so very fortunate to have this particular team working out there in our schools. I want the board to hear just a few more statistics about this, because I think, again, this is just incredible. And I want you to look on that front row, because essentially, our graduation initiative, it started with that concept, it's three specialists and one director. And this particular first semester, now this isn't the entire year, this is one semester, this particular team made 633 referrals to Evelyn Charities. In addition, this team worked directly with 225 other student referrals to other specialized agencies beyond Evelyn. When you add the students together, that this particular group of ladies served in terms of advice and direction, when you add that they work with our Twilight, and as well as our mini-mester students at risk, the total number is 1,237. Now, I'd love to know what the secret of that is, because how in the world can that four impact so many students? But here's the important statistic I want to give you. 1,237 students, of that number, 95% are still enrolled in Buncombe County School after having these services provided. And I will tell you, as a veteran administrator, that that percentage, without that particular service, I doubt that it would reach 50%. That's amazing. So hats off, don't know how we thank you, don't know how this school system and those families and those kids thank you. And Bill, what an incredible partnership that you represent with Evelyn Charities, and it just has meant, it's saved lives. It has truly saved lives. When you talk about Evelyn Charities, and you look at beyond the graduation initiative, we put, we got our finance department working with this a little bit, and we were able to put some numbers together in terms of students and families in Buncombe County Schools in one year that Evelyn Charities has impacted. And if you put the dollar figure on the services that they provided for all those families, that figures $830,000. So again, hats off to you, what an incredible resource for not only the school system, but Buncombe County, Bill. School calendar and makeup day options. Has anybody seen that ice storm that was coming this afternoon? It was supposed, maybe it's coming, we're monitoring very carefully. As we stand as a district, we have missed a total of seven days due to inclement weather. The Irwin District has actually missed an additional day, bringing their total to eight. Prior to last week's last day on February 24th, we had determined and announced a makeup schedule for those five previous days missed. And I want to thank our communications staff and our central office leadership team for putting together a survey, that I was just wowed with the actual response from our stakeholders, our parents and employees out in Buncombe County. Because we asked them to take this particular survey to help us with options to look at future makeup days. And so with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Porter to go ahead and pull our PowerPoint up. I think each board member has a copy of that, because the numbers may be a little hazy. Over 15,000 responses from our community. When we looked at the options, I think we put five options on the table. April 6th was the overwhelming preferred option for makeup, extending the year to June 11th was the second most preferred. And now, I can't believe this, can anybody else, that spring break by far was the least preferred at 62%. Let's look at each one of these particular options. The first option, using a teacher leave day on April the 6th. And just to give you some reference to that, the week before is what we would be considering spring break. That is the Easter Sunday prior to April 6th. Again, I think our total, the percentage that accepted that as a good option was 80%. Donning, let's move to the second choice. And that was extending the school year one more day, and that would be ending on Thursday, June the 11th. That was the second highest at 66%. Just a little reference to a particular week prior to graduation. I can recall, I think it was actually seven years ago, when the particular snow makeups forced us to go to school all the way through Friday, prior to the Friday night and Saturday graduation. I don't know if anyone's here from the Inca District, but I can recall being there, watching that ceremony, and seeing about 10 staff members standing at the stair, making sure before any student walked across, that they had checked everything to make sure they were eligible to graduate. So therefore, through that particular experience, we have vowed to make sure we have at least one planning day prior to a graduation ceremony. So that would allow us to still have that planning day on that Friday. Memorial Day was the next option that was selected in terms of, in terms of statistical responses, and the acceptable percentage was 63%. I will tell you that, to fast-track on what we're going to recommend to the board and ask for endorsement, that if that is approved, the next particular day that we miss in Buncombe County Schools, and again, using, I think, this excellent guide from our stakeholders, that if we take Memorial Day, and we have had to do that in the past, that that would be an early release day, to allow families an opportunity for some early release time to work with their children, and be with their children and family, to recognize the importance of Memorial Day. But more importantly, from the school system standpoint, we would mandate that each one of our 42 schools in the school system would have a Memorial Day program. I can recall being at Woodford Elementary last year, when a program was put on for Memorial Day. And I recall a staff member coming up to me, who happened to also be a veteran, and saying, you know, I know there's some questions about coming to school on Memorial Day, but, you know, in my mind, this ensures that every one of these students truly walks away at the end of this school day, knowing the importance to this nation for Memorial Day. So again, as Superintendent, I certainly hope that the winter season is done, and that that does not become an option to be used. But that was the third. Saturday school, we have certainly had to use that in the past. That acceptability percentage was at 62%. I will tell you that when Saturday schools, most of us try to get out during the car line in the morning, and that is some of the happiest parents I have ever seen in my life, pulling up to a school building and letting their children out. In fact, I always thought, why did we not use that as a fundraiser? If we just had a tin can out there as parents left. But, you know, we certainly hope we're not going to have to use any Saturdays. And then finally, the spring break, and I think, I think certainly we would anticipate that that would be the least favorable. Just to give you a rundown in terms of the entire seven days, and how we have made those up, January 30th was the first date on the calendar that we missed. We have a forgiven day one, and let me explain that. We are running on a 182-day calendar. I think many of you recall that the traditional days in the school calendar are at 180. We had an option three years ago to extend all the way up to 184, or 185. We were one of the few systems in the state, along with Asheville City, that opted to extend beyond 180. So we do have an option to take 182 and 180 to return back to that traditional calendar. And the way the state law is written, we have to meet either-or, we either meet 185 instructional days, student days, or we meet the minimum 1,025 instru-
180.
No, it's either, you meet 185, because they allowed that extension, or I made the same mistake, Madam Chair, last week, and I got corrected by my curriculum staff over there, calendar staff.
I've been corrected.
185, or 1,025 hours. And Mrs. Swanger is keeping a record every single day, and we are certainly in very good shape in terms of meeting that 1,025 hours. February 17th was June 8th, that was taken. These are all days that were billed in at the end of the calendar. February 18th was June 9th, February 19th, June 10th. February 20th, we went back to that 182nd day. February 24th and February 26th, the most recent. And so tonight, I am recommending that we follow the response that came through our survey, and that April 6th represent the makeup for February 24th, and then June 11th, which extends that school year, represent February 26th. In talking to council, I don't believe we necessarily have to have a vote, per se, on these makeup days, but I would like to get some type of endorsement, Madam Chair, for that particular plan.
Is it the pleasure of the board that we endorse Dr. Baldwin's recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you. You've been endorsed. Or maybe your recommendation has been endorsed.
It's dangerous to be endorsed. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. I certainly do want to thank the, our parents and the community that responded to that survey, and helped us in making the decisions for our school calendar. And as you well know, they are forecasting a little falling precipitation tonight as well. So at this time, we will have our public comment, and I believe we have two people that have signed up for public comment, and that is Stacy Feldman.
Ms. Feld.
Uh-huh. Well, I wasn't going to say Jim's name until, that's going to make Jim wait. Ms. Feldman.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. My name is Stacy Feldman, and I have four boys who have attended the Buncombe County Schools. Two now in college at Duke and at Chapel Hill, who have swum for the TC Robertson Swim Team, one who is swimming for the TC Robertson Swim Team currently, and one who will certainly swim when his time comes. I was told when I spoke at the county commissioners' meeting on Tuesday that I sounded angry. I was angry. I am angry that Wanda Green and the county commissioners have dishonored their contract, and put this board in the position of having to lose their very successful swimming program, take on the management of a swimming pool, or be put in the very uncomfortable situation of having to demand that the commissioners honor the agreement that they made in 2008. I would have liked the commissioners to respect the contract they signed with this board, to keep Zurgner open while constructing a new facility in the adjacent land. I was hoping you would all insist that they do so. I am, however, grateful that Dr. Baldwin has spearheaded your efforts to ensure that we will have a place, not only for our children to practice next year, but an appropriate facility that will host the majority of swim meets in western North Carolina. Please make sure our pool stays open. If it means that you take it over, thank you. But if you do, please don't let the county commissioners put caveats on you, other than that they will provide you with the fund. In exchange for fulfilling what should be their responsibilities, please demand that they live up to the rest of their commitments in this contract. Namely, that they build the specified pool on the specified land right next to the existing Zurgner Pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is Jim Cotum.
I'm the coach for TC Robertson Swimming. I've been working for Buncombe County Schools in the capacity as a swim coach for the last 17 years. And I am just here thankful that it looks like we're going to have a place to swim next year, thankful that we will have possibly a new pool in the future, but to also let everybody know, I'm going to keep coming, I'm going to keep having people send emails, I'm going to fully support the swimmers, the swim community, our specific team. I know you all talked about graduation rates a little bit earlier. In the 17 years that I've been coaching, I only know of one swimmer that did not graduate. And they went back and got their GED. There have probably only been five that did not go on to higher education, graduate from college, or get a degree from AB Tech. So it is very important, if you want to keep those graduation rates up, that we keep the swim teams going.
Thank you, Mr. Cotum. Our next speaker is Jerry Rice.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Dr. Baldwin. The swim team, folks, have got an education in politics, in civics, that they'll never forget. If they've been around as long as I have messing with politicians, they'd find out, you've got to stay on them. It ain't a question of when, you just have to stay on it. I'd like to bring some things to your attention. Mr. Bill Murdock is a personal friend of mine, and I love him. He is one that I went to and took data on the dropout, and he's got data, if he still kept it, from 1941 on dropout that I gave him. Nobody probably in the state's got it except me, because I'm crazy about that stuff. But there's one thing that is astonishing to me, how high the rate was at one time, for how many years? The only time that it changed was after the state board made a policy change, and I won't let you forget that. Graduation initiative, a wonderful thing. It is good numbers, Dr. Baldwin, and I like to hear that, and I think it's doing good. But if they saw the numbers in the past, the people are still here that's affected by those numbers that we had in the past, but the numbers you sharing tonight does not reflect that. The people that I'm talking about is still in our school system, still not being served. But they are a larger number that is being served, that used to not get served. The community colleges have come in to work, you know. There've been several things that's come into play. What I find out, that this National Board certification, is a lot of emphasis put on it. SAs, SATs, all kinds of things on the high end is put emphasis on. What we need to focus on as a board is staff development. If we don't have our regular teachers, and let me tell you, we love the regular teachers, that's where the progress really is. If you don't hit the majority of the people, you're not going to have National Board of Certification do anything. They get a PhD to get more money, they get a lot of honors, pats on the back, but the grunts on the ground is the regular teachers and the special ed teachers. And the special education kids that I serve and I help, and I wish I could get to every one of them. They need these regular teachers to be ready and ready to go, and they are not. $60,000 has been spent on staff development at the RISD Center last year. $60,000 for Buncombe County has been put in. Is there other staff development that's going on within the district, I'm sure. But what I'm seeing, you're nowhere near touching these kids that I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Next item on the agenda is presentation by our attorney, Mr. Donahue.
Just a few weeks ago, Dr. King, President of AB Tech, notified our office that Bill Hart would not be seeking reappointment to the AB Tech Board of Trustees. And just as a moment of personal privilege, Bill, I've worked with him as the attorney for AB Tech for several years now. I know him personally, he's a consummate gentleman, and has looked at your interests, and has represented your interests on the board well, and he'll be missed. You do have a policy regarding appointment of trustees. It's policy 2240. And essentially, what it states is, four trustees to the AB Tech Board will come from the two school systems in the county, two trustees from, appointed by Asheville City, two appointed by Buncombe County. And each board will nominate and choose for their particular board, and then the other board will also have a right to vote on that candidate. So in order for you all, your time is coming up. Bill Hart was a appointment from the Buncombe County Board, and so your time is coming up to appoint a new individual to that board. And in order to meet the August 2016 deadline, this board would need to vote and select an individual by May, at the May board meeting. So Asheville City would have the opportunity to vote on that candidate at the June board meeting. Neither of the boards meet in July. So in order to have someone ready and prepared to go on the, at the August 2016 meeting, you would want to have, you want to stick to that schedule. The policy does not provide a procedure as to how this board should go about selecting a new trustee, so that, it is wide open as to what this board wants to do. You can accept informal resumes from individuals, you can have formal interviews, a panel of the board can choose to interview particular candidates, the whole board can. Basically, the sky is yours as to how you want to go about doing this. I'm not sure what you've done in the past, but I'm open to having discussion about how you want to go in the future, and what procedure you'd like to see put into place for nominating a new trustee.
Board, do you have comments or questions?
Dr. Baldwin or other board members, do you remember how this has been handled in the past?
Kind of unique, isn't it?
This is a new turn for us.
Yeah, your two individuals have been on for quite a while.
Right.
So the institutional memory of Campbell Shatley, well, Walter wasn't in the office today, but the institutional memory of the three younger attorneys, and Campbell Shatley couldn't remember how you all have done it, so.
But it's certainly, to my recollection, it's certainly not been a process that, I think, has maybe taken the time that I'm hearing certain individuals on the board believe that it should involve for the right candidate. It was a very fast-paced process in terms of nomination and vote.
Any other questions from board members?
I just have a comment. My-
My preference would be to have some kind of bio on the candidate's resume, whatever the board decided, but especially for those of us who may not be familiar with all of the recommended candidates.
Would the board be in favor of us taking the information that Mr. Donahue has provided and looking at this, maybe a procedure that we would put in place? We have a little time to do that and perhaps come back next month and offer that to the board. Would that be good?
Yes.
It'd be fine.
Yeah, and in addition to the procedure, it would be helpful to have some criteria, maybe that we all can agree on too, in terms of what we're looking for in this position.
I'm sure we could get some help from AB Tech. Yes, okay. Then we will put that on the agenda to be done. I don't think I did a very good job of explaining to you, those have copies of the agenda that was printed way before the weather and all of the things that occurred. And we have altered this agenda, as you have figured out, by taking the students out so that we didn't, except for the scouts who are here, and we appreciate them weathering the storm. Thank you. But we took the student pieces out so that those people could stay home and be safe, and we will add them to the agenda for next time. So as we move down, it's kind of a bumpy road here. Speaking of bumpy roads and snow and such, I'd like to recognize our maintenance people and our transportation people who have been out on those rocky, snowy, icy roads, making determinations whether we could safely transport children to school. And I want to commend them and Joe Huff, I don't think Joe's here tonight, for the --
There he is.
You don't have your uniform on. I just can't see you there. I want to thank all of you, as a parent, as a board member and chair, and as a teacher. It is impossible for us to have school if we don't have students, and it's impossible for us to have school if we don't have safe transportation, and I appreciate that. That sand truck went up and down my house numerous times, and I'm sure it went by everybody else's as well. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution concerning Irwin High School, and we've asked Mr. Pat Bryant to read that resolution.
Madam Chair, rest of the board, it is my honor to read this resolution. For the record, it is a resolution of the Buncombe County Board of Education to rename the Clyde A. Irwin High School Gymnasium in honor of the 36 years of service to Irwin by David A. Ball. Whereas David Ball, CMAA, has spent his entire 35-year professional career as a teacher, coach, and athletic director at his alma mater, Clyde A. Irwin High School in Asheville, North Carolina. After graduating from Irwin High School in 1975, Ball earned his bachelor's degree from Western Carolina University in 1979, and returned to Irwin that fall as a social studies teacher and baseball coach. Whereas Ball coached the baseball team for 19 years before becoming the school's athletic director in 1998, he compiled a 286 and 160 record as the baseball coach, and led his teams to 13 playoff appearances in 19 years, as well as nine conference championships. Ball's 1988 team was runner-up in the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Class 3A State Baseball Championship. Whereas since moving into athletic administration 16 years ago, Ball has been involved extensively with the North Carolina Athletic Directors Association, which is NCADA, the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association, which is NIAAA, and the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. Ball is a past president of the NCADA and currently serves on the NCADA Awards Committee and Mentoring Committee. Among his contributions to the state association, Ball served four years on the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Board of Directors, and has hosted regional and sectional events in track and basketball. Whereas at the national level, Ball has attended seven National Athletic Directors Conferences and was a member of the NIAAA Blue Ribbon Panel at the 2008 conference. He earned his Certified Athletic Administrator Certification in 2002 and Certified Master's Athletic Administrator in 2004. Whereas in addition to his coaching and administrative tasks, Ball was an NCHSA, North Carolina High School Athletic Association, baseball official for 13 years, and officiated state championship events in 2001 and 2007. And whereas Ball received the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Citation Award in 2007, and the NIAAA State Award of Merit in 2009. This past year, he was named North Carolina High School Athletic Association Athletic Director of the Year and the North Carolina High School Athletic Association 100 to Remember Administrator List. He also was the Region 8 recipient of the 2013 Charlie Adams Distinguished Service Award. Now therefore be it resolved that the Advisory Council of Clyde A. Irwin High School submits to the Buncombe County Board of Education this request to rename the Clyde A. Irwin High School Gymnasium the David A. Ball Gymnasium in honor of David Ball's 36 years of service to the students of Irwin High School, as well as his leadership in athletics at the conference, state, and national levels. Read and hopefully approved this fifth day of March 2015, Madam Chair.
So, Mr. Bryant, you are making a motion that we --
I would make a motion that we approve this resolution, and I would add one caveat. I think most of the people on the board, folks in the audience, may not know this. I spent 20 years, first 20 years of my working life, working in college athletics, where in an athletic department, you have many folks who work in administrative levels and do a lot to help ensure that the day-to-day operations and events and programs are run smoothly and happen properly. And during that time, I spent a lot of time on high school campuses recruiting and watching events, and a lot of times, not because of a lack of ability, but simply because of a lack of time and staff, because what athletic directors do in high school all day long is teach, things were not done as well. When I moved here, and both of my kids were involved in high school athletics at Irwin, while I was coaching and after I got out, the thing that stood out to me about David was I felt like the athletic programs at Irwin High School were run as a small college athletic program. The attention to detail and the things that were done daily for all the sports and all the athletes, my daughter was a cheerleader, my son played basketball and baseball, it was done well for all of them. It wasn't just for football, it wasn't just for basketball, but it was run well. And it's been my honor to have worked with him on some projects and to watch that as a parent, to watch it from a board level, and to see, and I just, I think he's very deserving of this honor that's been brought to us by the school improvement team and the folks in the Irwin community.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. David Ball played baseball against my brother when he was in high school, just for a frame of reference. The next item on the agenda is the Budget for Amendment. Ms. Frisbee is coming forward. Board members, have questions for Ms. Frisbee? That was a long walk with no questions.
I do not.
Oh, my. That is, yes.
It's one of the more simple budget amendments we've had in my eight-plus years.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve this amendment?
No.
And second?
Second.
Well, I'm sorry you did all that walking, but thank you. Uh huh, yeah. The next item is the Student Picture, did we not vote?
No. We have a motion to second, but you'll want to call that question?
Can we please vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the next item on the agenda is the Student Picture Package Recommendation for 2015-16. Any questions for our picture man?
I had a question.
You have a question?
I do.
Mr. Brentarella?
Just reading over it, and it's probably me, I was a little unclear. I know that this is allowing more competition and allowing the school principals to negotiate with photographers. One thing I was just a little unclear on is, from looking at this, it looks like at the very minimum, each school will offer the exact same $10 package, and then the other packages could be left up to the principal and photographer for different choices. So, okay. That was all.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is the ANCA Intermediate School, joiner in Amendment to Architectural Contract. Do we have a recommendation for approval? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Fairley? Do I have a motion that we accept?
I would move that we accept this, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is the ANCA High School Track Improvement Contract Increase. Any questions?
Irwin High School.
Irwin High School.
High School, yes. Any questions?
I just wanted to clarify, when I read this originally, it sounded like we were going to be, rather than just improving the current track, we were going to be building a whole new facility. But I understand that we are actually just expanding the existing facility. Is that correct?
That is correct. We just had this discussion, Mr. Fairley, we just had this discussion this afternoon.
The increase in the contract will modify the existing track to meet state standards, and it's basically the size of it, the length, because it was built to, you know, feet and inches, and now everything's stated as meters, metric. So in order to record a state record there, you need to have the appropriate track.
And is it likely we'll run into the same problem when we get to the other tracks?
It's very likely we will. They're being surveyed now, and it will be next to impossible to modify those tracks to meet the state standards without a very large expense, because they're kind of landlocked between the turf fields and bleachers. So there's nowhere to go with those tracks, whereas Irwin is our only track that is separate from the stadium, and there's plenty of room to go in and out and move it around.
So we'll cross those bridges when we get to them, then?
We will. Well, I will report to you, and if the board wishes, I can get, you know, I can look at the feasibility of making those tracks the appropriate length. I'm telling you now that it's going to be a very high-dollar figure.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Mr. Fairley, could, would I be correct in thinking that maybe similar to what we were planning on doing with the pool hosting countywide events, that if we focused our time and energy and money on this particular track, that it could serve a countywide track and field event meet, a larger-scale meet, I guess, is what I'm asking?
That's correct, and those records would be able to be recorded as state records. So we would at least have one facility in the Buncombe County school system that you could host those kind of events and record the records. You can certainly hold those events, it's just they would only be school records.
And there's something to be said for state records.
Okay, other questions?
Are we addressing this motion that's about to be made for both items? It seems like there's two parts to this. One is a track upgrade and another is a support facilities to host events. Is that intended to be bundled together?
It is all in one, but if you only wish to modify the track and not do those support items, which are some seating, there is no seating whatsoever there on bleachers. You can stand around, of course. Some form of water down at the track, a water fountain, seems to be appropriate if you had that kind of event. And you need some level of electrical power for laptops and all the things they do to, you know, run a meet like that.
The reason for my question, going back to Ms. Churchill's question, is we're going to use that as an anchor point, a central point to invite large-scale events. It seems like that needs to be blended, and we need to approve it as a package and not individually, I suppose, at the risk of foregoing the support facilities.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Combine them.
To combine them?
Combine them.
Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, do I have a motion that we confirm the track improvements for Irwin, and those two items will be combined so that we can have a competitive state track?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is the Martin L. Nesbit Junior Discovery Academy Phase 1 Closeout and Phase 2 Seating Funding. You probably just need to stay right down there. And I would like for you to talk about this just a little bit, the expansion that's going on, just in general terms, so the other people know, if you would.
Okay, so we have 100 students here and five teachers, and next year we'll be expanding by another 100 students in the following year until we have a 400-student body. And with that comes additional teachers and such. We intentionally left some spaces in the Discovery Academy, if you've been there, such as upstairs, kind of wide open. They don't really, they didn't really need it this year, but this program is kind of an open book, if you will. We're modifying as we go. Now that we've had the students here and teachers and administrators, I can get their feedback as to what they would like that upper level to look like, how many more smaller spaces, larger spaces. So it also involves the construction of a gymnasium within the facility here, a warehouse space that can be opened up and become a gymnasium for phys ed. There's some available spaces around the perimeter for additional, I'll call it project lead the way, kind of the engineering side of it. So there's another phase of work and completion of the commercial kitchen. Right now, it's kind of a catering kitchen, but you can heat up food, but you don't really prepare food there, and this next phase would include that. What I'm asking is to, first of all, again, it's kind of another combined thing, so you need to, there's two parts to it. One is to close out Phase 1. The contractor has now completed all the punch list work, the warranties are in place, he's provided his operation manuals. We did have some additional costs for inspector-requested items that need to be completed and done to meet the building department's life safety requests. And we also have on the other side of that a request for Phase 2 to hire designers, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, kitchen equipment designers, to do kind of the schematic design phase, to come back to you and tell you, identify what the scope of Phase 2 might be as a recommendation, and what that cost would be. So those are the, kind of, the two sides of the request here.
Discovery Academy is a work in progress, is it not?
It is, and I think it will change over the years.
Yeah, okay. So do board members have questions for Mr. Fairley?
I just have one, Madam Chair. The inspector, Buncombe County?
Mm-hmm.
Planning, I mean, that's where that came from. That's the --
Buncombe County Inspector.
The process.
And an elevator, a state elevator inspector also.
But that's the process of inspecting. But that's, that's the process of inspecting, not only during construction and throughout, but then that final inspection and coming through and recommendations for changes, adjustments.
Even though the plans were reviewed by both the state and the inspector, they have in North Carolina the purview to say, you will do this or you will not open the school.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. I thought that's what that was referring to.
The timeframe seems tight with, you know, everything has to be done by August, right?
No, the, we're only going to have 100 more students, and we need, part of that request is for some additional furnishings and equipment for the next set of teachers that will be coming in for this August. The...
I don't see the work being done.
No, the real work, that's just furnishings and such. The real work will likely, if you approve it, start around December and complete for next, it would be the 2016 school year.
Any other questions from the Discovery Academy? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item on the agenda is also Mr. Donahue, who is going to speak to us about some work that he did today.
Yes, you have on your agenda, on the consent agenda, a resolution entitled INCIS Real Property Acceptance of Lease Hold Interest with Incumbrances. Three different attorneys, my office, the bond counsel office, and the county attorney have been working on this matter. When you have a lot of attorneys looking at a document, they like to make changes. And so up until 4:30 today, we were making changes to this resolution and the attached lease and agency agreements. I'm happy to address any questions that you might have. I also want to thank Connie for being very flexible. Like I said, this was going up to about 4:30 today, trying to get all this drafted. It is important we get it drafted, we get this signed tonight, because the LGC application, local government commission application, is due in a couple of weeks, and the county is getting everything together. And this is the last meeting prior to that. We're still on schedule to have the release of funds for the INC project in April, at some point in April. So I would ask that, if it's the board's pleasure, that the revised, someone, a board member make a motion to include the, replace the current resolution on the consent agenda with the revised resolution that you have before you.
Can you just give us any insight into what's been changed, since we got this before and reviewed it? Is it just sort of legalese, or are there substantive items that have been changed?
Two changes, really both legalese. We referenced, the resolution referenced the lease and agency agreement, but it was not incorporated by reference into the resolution. So that has been done. And also, it gives the ability for the board attorney, in the event that these documents will have to be revised again, which likely there will have to be some revisions, because you have three attorneys and nobody's ever satisfied with anything. Gives the attorney the right to go back and make minor revisions, as long as it's not inconsistent with the resolution, so we don't have to come back and get board approval. So really primarily technical issues. Substance, if you need me to address anything substantively about it, I'm happy to, if that's your question.
That, that's, that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other board members have questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to, to approve the revised...
I think the motion would be to include the revised resolution onto the consent agenda.
I have a motion to do what he said.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Donahue.
You're welcome.
Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now at the announcement section of the agenda, and I just need to
take a moment and thank our staff. And if this wasn't a day when we practiced flexibility all the way from the classroom to the superintendent's office, I don't know one. And Jason Boyer of the weather reporting, people sure did help us practice flexibility. So I, to commend you for all that you do and make it look like it's just as easy as a slice of pie. I appreciate that, and the board does as well. I'd like to make the announcement that the School Boards Association Annual Conference is March 21st through the 23rd, and our next regular board meeting is April the 9th. Can you believe it's April? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also like to note that it is 7:27 PM.